Councilmember Clayton is absent. Councilmember Kendall?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Here.
Please stand for a silent prayer, moment of reflection. Anyone else salute the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and just as it was founded. As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coaster, and the Star Ledger on January 7th, 2022, and posted on the bulletin board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. We are now on to special event applications.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. There are just two beach cleanups that are requesting to be done. One on June 9th and one on June 14th. Any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're now on to matters from City Council.
So I just want to remind everyone that if you have any projects for the city's participatory budgeting projects, the deadline is July 31st. The city has carved out $250,000 out of our budget, and we're leaving it up to the residents of our city to recommend projects to be done. It's got to be done on city property, and it's got to be able to benefit the entire city. So please send us some of your projects. Thank you. That's it.
I just have one thing to say. My condolences go out to the family of the young boy, 16, 17-year-old that harmfully passed away this weekend. So I just sent out with my condolences to the family.
I have nothing.
I'll continue. On April 28th, we had the fundraiser for recreation. Since then, I've been announcing we'll still take more money. In the last meeting, we got a $5,000 donation. And this past week, we got a $1,000 donation from Tracy and Lydell Akins on behalf of Triumphant Church. So anybody who continues to want to make a contribution or to donation to the Monmouth County's best summer recreation program, we're still accepting money. Correct, Lysia? Okay, Tracy and Lydell, thank you. That's it.
And applications, right?
And staff.
Yes.
And buses.
And buses.
And bus drivers.
Matters from City Manager? I have nothing. Thanks. Matters from the City Attorney?
I have nothing at this time.
Okay, we're now on to the public participation section of the meeting. May I have a motion to open up the public?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public portion is now open. If you would like to make a comment, please go to the microphone. Each speaker will have three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Natalie Syracuse. I live at 116 Springwood Avenue. And I want to talk about what it's like living on the West Side. I've lived in Asbury Park for 11 years. I was on Fourth Ave for eight years, and I've been on Springwood in the Renaissance for three. I was hesitant to move over there because, you know, it's the West Side. I was moving from Fourth Ave, but everybody, all these people assured me it was going to be great. I moved because there has central air conditioning, three bedrooms, affordable rent. And I was wrong. Everybody was wrong. It's a very stressful place to live. There's been so many issues that I've called the police about because I don't know who else to call, and nothing has ever gotten resolved, ever. I have a list of things that like I thought about that have been issues. One of the biggest things is I have seven-year-old twins, and I'm a single parent. So if I'm walking on the street, on the sidewalks, I have to always be aware of who is on the sidewalk. And we have, almost every time we go out, we have to change direction to avoid people that are going to spit on us or punch us or otherwise assault or verbally assault us, which has happened in the past, in the three years that I've been there. So I'm always on guard, who's there? We can't have our windows open because the corner property at the Asbury Park Village on the corner of Adams and Sylvan, and I don't know what apartment number that is, has house parties 12 months a year, almost seven days a week. Sometimes they don't, but for the most part, they have loud parties outside, nonstop. I have called the police dozens of times about this, and nothing has ever been done. They might stop for a day or two, but it continues. They also love to launch helium balloons to celebrate the life or death of somebody who used to live there. It happens regularly. They also have, their last weekend, there were three quads that were racing around the neighborhood. I called police three times. They had, they knew about what was going on, and it took them 25 to 30 minutes to respond to these three quads at 10:00 PM on Friday night, racing around Asbury Park Village, and also coming up on the property of the Renaissance. And then they, when the police got there, they drove their car and, whatever. It was, it was a nightmare, and it was distressing, and it doesn't look like anything got done. There's fireworks constantly, although it hasn't happened yet this year, I'm sure it will. The past two years, it's just been fireworks, nonstop, with the stuff on our property, with the trash landing on the roof, littering everywhere. I've had things stolen off my porch, which I had a camera, which had a picture of the person stealing the stuff. The police caught the person, and they said, oh, well, we can't do anything about it because the person was wearing a hat. And so we can't do anything. So I will be done. But I just want to say that, you know, Springwood Ave is, needs a lot of help. And it's exciting to be careful.
Thank you, and I'm sure the City Manager will be in touch with the Police Chief in the morning, and we'll get a reply to you.
Yeah, so I, I had the chief reach out to, actually, I think our captain reached out to her today, and we have spoken to her about her concerns.
Okay, but doesn't it sound like they're being addressed?
It was yesterday.
Okay.
Yeah.
But she says she's been calling for months. Okay.
Years.
Years, okay. So we're on it.
We're on it.
We're on it.
Years later, and we'll say yes.
Okay, thank you.
Hi. I'm a little nervous.
You're good.
If you don't want to do it, you could send us an email. This is, it's daunting, the microphone. You can absolutely send us an email or call us, whatever you want to do.
Can I get, can you hear me? Okay. I live at 1116 also, in a different apartment.
You have to give your name?
Oh, Terry Harris. I've lived there also for three years since they built the, them. And I used to live on Third, actually, Third and Heck, at 403rd. It is very stressful to live where we live now because the police don't tend to help us much when we call for things like the four-by-fours going through the yard. I have dogs. I walk my dog at least four times a day. And, you know, walking them can be very, very dangerous at times when people are riding either on a scooter or on a four-by-four. The other thing is the fact that they changed the pattern of traffic, and which is great, right? That's like awesome. But they have enforced it zero days since it was enforced, supposedly. Not only that, but they put the signage up on only one side of the street, which is where the Springwood AP or Parkview AP, whatever it is, the new homes were built. And so it seems as though, even though it says any time arrows on either side, which anybody who knows signage knows what that means. But it seems like since it's only on one side of the street, nobody is obeying it on the other side. But the police also drive by it every single day and don't do anything. And then not only that, but then they go up the wrong side of the street, even though it's a one-way, and it says one-way. But then it also doesn't say wrong way when you come in, and it also says no left turn when it should say wrong way at the other end of the street, since it's a one-way. Like, none of this makes any sense. I can pretty well follow directions when I see street signs because I can read and I have a license, but it doesn't seem like a lot of people do who drive on those streets. So that's also stressful because I have a nine-year-old daughter, and walking around with her is like, you never know if someone's going to go flying up the street the wrong direction, and then someone's going to go flying down the street, just flying down the street anyway. And then there's cars all parked along, and so everyone's stopping, and it's insanity there. It's also insanity, yes, with the fireworks all night long. My dog's crying all night long. I can't sleep. Like, I need sleep. I don't know about anybody else here, but I need to sleep. I work. I try my best to work and pay my bills. It's impossible with being up all night, every night, because the police do not do anything. We call, they're like, oh, what's the address? They want you to know the exact address, like I went over to their house and figured it out. I'm not doing that. I don't need any more problems. They've stolen my bikes. They've stolen the whole entire railing from the outside of my porch to steal my bikes. Like, it's insane. It's crazy there. We just need more support for where we live.
Thank you.
Thank you, and we can look into the signage?
Yeah, look into the signs, absolutely. And just so you know, when you dial 911, you're not...
I just called the number.
You're just the number, the C number, okay? I just wanted to clarify what you were calling.
Oh, definitely.
Yeah, okay. No, no, but you can. I mean, that's perfectly fine, especially with the quads and whatnot. Call 911.
Okay.
You know, if you want to make a report, call 911.
Okay.
Rita?
Yeah, we, I'll take care, yep, I'll take care of the signage.
Sort of on the same subject. The signs are still up on two blocks that don't mean anything. They're the same signs, they're repeated. And on Grand Avenue now, I forgot, we used to have red lights on that street. We don't have them anymore. And a friend of mine that lives on First and Heck was at a full stop by the library, and some guy came smashing into him and took his car across the Grand Avenue. Those signs, those signs, most people that don't live here won't even observe them because they don't see them. Something's really got to be done about the sign ordinance. I don't know why. I'm not an expert. When is the parking authority meeting? I'd like to go to that one, about the cars, the way they speed around, motorcycles at night. I don't know. Something's got to be done. But anyway, I wasn't going to talk about that, but you brought it up. I wanted to tell you about the election yesterday. Something's got to be done about it because nobody is voting. Nobody. And you have all these people that are sitting there. They used to make $200 a day, now I think it's more. And for what? I was number six at 3 o'clock in the afternoon. I mean, something's really got to be done. I know you don't get involved politically, but I don't think you should have all those places open neither and pay the price. I don't know who pays the price. Who does? We do? Who pays the 200 a day? Well, I don't know who. Somebody must know who. But it's ridiculous, number six at 3 o'clock in the afternoon? There's thousands of voters in this town. They better get out and vote because that's when you pick your candidate. Nobody knows about it. You should advertise that. I know you don't have to get political, but that's not being political. That's just the American way, that we have to vote. And that, something really has to be done about that. To be number six at 3 o'clock in the afternoon? No. And then we brought people to the polls. They were number 10 and number 9. So nobody in this whole town is voting. What's wrong? Are they dead or what? Somebody better come alive because it affects your life whether you know it or not. But I mean, I think you have something to do with that, right? You pay the poll members? That's it.
Okay.
Oh, and I want to say thank you in advance.
For what?
The bond ordinance.
Okay. Don't jinx it. But the polls, what polls are open and how many people are manning the polls is a decision made by the county clerk's office. So you'd have to talk to Ms. Hanlon at the county clerk's office to ask that. And who's paying for it eventually? You, me, and everybody else in this room, the taxpayers. So that's it. But we have no jurisdiction over that. They say how many polls have to be open? They say how many people have to work them, and it's their decision, and we can't do anything about it.
But we do pay the workers?
The county.
The county pays the workers.
County pays the workers.
The county?
Mm-hmm.
But it's your tax dollars.
But, right, but you're paying the taxes to pay the county to pay.
I know, but something's really got to be done.
Okay, 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 okay. We don't have cross-conversations. You can get up and start. With Rita, we'll be here all night.
Hi, Dan Shonomeo, Asbury Avenue. I'm here to talk about the new firehouse that's going to be, planned to be constructed on the west parking lot of our rail station. I learned about this through the planning board. I'm here as a private citizen, not as an alternate on the planning board. But when I received those materials and I saw that, I was alarmed that that site selection. Let me also say I'm a big fan of the fire department. I think they, you know, deserve, you know, state-of-the-art facilities, and they work hard, and they save lives in our town. So I'm a big fan of them. It's not that I, it's just that I think the site selection is wrong because you will be taking the parking for the rail station. The smaller one on the east side is metered, you know, just like the regular spots around town. It's the way it's configured, you know? If you left that and, you know, took away the metering or made a, you know, commuter price, we would have less parking than any town north or south of us. Bradley would have more parking spots. Belmar would have more parking spots. Allanhurst would, Elboron, I've counted them. You know, you passed the resolution recommending it to the planning board on May 11th. I watched the city council meeting where it came up discussion, the presentation that we saw from the planning board on August 27th. I don't, you can answer me afterwards. I don't know if the council, you know, had debated this prior to the site selection, before that April 27th. The only comment from the council was the mayor about solar panels. And I think Rita brought up about the gym, and nobody else said anything about it. I'm very alarmed because it's, either you can't build it there or you have to replace, you have to replace the parking. I mean, we can't be what we want to be and what we are and have a rail station without sufficient parking. I mean, I watched the presentation in front of the council, and it was much shorter than it was in front of the planning board. I think it was, it was no more than 10 minutes. And even when I asked at the planning board, you know, are you replacing the parking? You know, I was looked at like, you know, that was not a thought. So I, you know, I understand we want to get away cheap that we own it. And you can fit everything on this municipal plaza site, right? You know, I think it's badly developed. You know, I make my living in eminent domain, and I'm not suggesting you condemn, but maybe you should square out the parcel and acquire through negotiation or whatever the other piece. I mean, you could fit everything here with development. But to put the parking, to put the, to take away our parking, once you take it, put that fire department there, it's never coming back. And plus, you're putting a three- and four-story building against the south platform, except for the little sidewalk. And you're making a corridor that, you know, people have to travel. Maybe you can answer me whether you've heard it before, April 27th, the council?
Absolutely. We looked at many sites, and, you know, both the administration and the council agreed that was, at this point in time, was the best site to put it at for many reasons, be it, number one, money and everything else. As much as you said, like, we could eminent domain another piece of property, and at the planning board meeting, you suggested the two pieces of property across the street. They've already been approved by planning board, and they're worth, and you're a better appraiser than I'll ever be. But I mean, on paper, they're worth like $20 million each because they've been approved for 90-some units. I mean, so...
I doubt that $20 million.
Okay, well, to eminent domain would have been so much higher than to use the piece of property. And as much as we're off of financial state transitional aid, we're not a city that's flush in money. You know, we went through COVID, we lost money. We have problems at the sewer plant that has to be addressed. We are addressing that with the federal money. You know, if there is, like, I told you that night, we did look at a piece of property on Asbury Avenue. We made a good offer, and the guy wanted $1 million more, and we said no. And he wound up selling it for $2 million more, so...
But you're, but you're building a 30, you know, it's 32,000 square feet. And I know, I mean, I know it's got, you can't build it for less than $300 a square foot. So you tend to, I don't know what the budget is, but it's got to be 10, $15 million. You know, it's another $2 to $3 million. But you can answer me, what about, where, where are we going to park in the future for rails? How could you have a rail station without parking?
Well, I'm just going to piggyback on what John's saying. We went through several sites, including a site on Third. Also, I'm not sure if you're aware, the current firehouse, I mean, we have been cited by OSHA. It couldn't be, the fact that it's still standing is a positive thing for us.
I understand about that.
Here's what I'm saying, too, time is a bit of the essence on this. And what I will also say is during COVID, we couldn't separate them enough, so we had them on the floor of the second floor of the DPW building. So, so just understand, when you talk about something like eminent domaining, that's years, Dan. Years to eminent domain something, or at least it was when I moved here 20 years ago.
No, it isn't. No, no, it isn't. So you follow the state's laws, and you title vests, it's years.
Sure, it's five minutes, five minutes, Dan, right?
But, no, it's not five minutes. But anyhow, what about parking? You didn't ask, what about the parking?
Parking is being looked at.
Okay.
Parking is being looked at.
That's a sufficient answer.
Either tonight or give me a yell, we can discuss that.
That's a sufficient answer.
I didn't bring it up at the planning board meeting because it wasn't relevant to the application. But parking is on all of our minds.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Louise Murray, 1604 Grand Avenue. We had a lovely Memorial Day. The weather was great. The service with the firemen was terrific, as usual. And I think, and I am definitely all for my city. Firemen, policemen, I am there for them all the time. However, the one thing that disturbed me terribly was where was the celebration for the veterans? Nothing happened over on Veterans Park. And I find that quite appalling because I have two brothers that served in the Korean War. I have a cousin, the parts of him is buried someplace in Belgium because he was a pilot and went down with the plane. And there are a lot of veterans walking around, and there was no recognition at all. And I don't get it. I mean, is it because Mr. Parisi, God love him, I don't know if he's still breathing, but he had something to do with it? So I inquired about the park over there, what's going on? No one knew. They said, oh, we think we moved it to Neptune. I mean, does the council know anything about this? Because I don't think there was any veterans celebration. And that, to me, you know, these men lay their lives down for us. They do it for their country. The firemen, oh my goodness, yes. The policemen, they go out there, they risk their lives every day. But they're not saving the country, they're saving our community. So I really would like to get some facts. What the heck are we going to do about this?
Okay, so I don't know who you talked to, but I wish you would talk to me, and I could have explained to you. So the Memorial Day celebration, the city's Memorial Day celebration has always been the one at Fireman's Park at 9 o'clock.
Right.
And I believe you were there.
Right.
Beautiful ceremony, it's been going on forever. The vicaries donate the flowers, and it's a, it's a very, very nice ceremony.
Right.
In years past, when VFW 1333 still owned the armory, they used to have another celebration at 10 o'clock at the Fifth Avenue Park. Since they moved to Neptune, they've discontinued that. So they don't do anything on Veterans Day or Memorial Day. For Veterans Day, in November, November 11th, the city will be having a ceremony at the Fifth Avenue Park for the veterans.
Okay. Because the Catholic War veterans used to go there right after...
They all used to go there, but now they don't go because they moved out of town. So since they moved out, the city is going to have their own ceremony November 11th at the park on Fifth Avenue, since it's been, like, you know, no longer being done by VFW 1333. And I'm not knocking them. They sold the building because they had money problems. They sold it, they made a nice profit, they bought a building in Neptune. So they're doing all their celebrations in Neptune. So knowing that, Asbury Park is going to have the Veterans Day celebration on Veterans Day, November 11th, 2022.
But, but John, I wasn't interested in the building for the celebration afterwards. I was just, you know, it does make a difference.
Well, you asked me a question, when's the celebration going to be? It's going to be for Veterans Day, it's going to be on Veterans Day.
All right. Okay. All right.
I know, I'll see you there because you attend all. Thank you, Louise. Anybody else? Somebody make the motion.
Move to close?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Public participation portion now closed. We're on to the minutes. I have the executive meeting minutes of May 25th and the regular meeting minutes of May 25th. Do you have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to consent agenda resolutions. All matters listed on the consent agenda are presented collectively to City Council and will be considered for approval with one vote. These matters are considered to be routine in nature, and there will be no individual discussion of these items. If discussion is desired by one or more, one or more council members as to any particular item, then said item shall be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. On consent, we have Resolutions 2022-250 through 2022-274. Do you have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Okay, we're on to individual resolutions. Resolution appro, sorry, Resolution 2022-275, a resolution approving payment of bills.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
No.
Resolution 2022-259, a resolution approving 2022-2023 alcoholic beverage control license for AP 30 Property Holdings LLC, DBA Convention Hall Concessions Beach Bar in the city of Asbury Park, County of Monmouth, New Jersey.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2022-276, a resolution authorizing the purchase of two new gem vehicles for transportation.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2022-277, a resolution authorizing the purchase of water and ice rescue equipment.
Move it.
Second.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2022-278, a resolution approving change order number four for Bond Street Improvements Project.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2022-279, a resolution awarding a bid for the transportation of liquid sewage sludge from AP wastewater treatment plant to PVSC.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2022-280, a resolution authorizing the firm of Kyle McManus Associates LLC to perform certain additional professional planning services relating to affordable housing.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
No.
Resolution, Resolution 2022-281, a resolution awarding a contract to Millennium Communications Group for a security camera with community development block grant funds.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-two, two eighty-two, resolution awarding a contract to provide fire department uniforms for twenty twenty-two.
Move it. Second.
Thank, thank you. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-two, two eighty-three, a resolution authorizing the annual renewal of gunfire technology with ShotSpotter.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-two, two eighty-four, a resolution to credit sewer account with erroneous reading by NJ American Water for a property located at one thirty-five Elizabeth Avenue, Block ten-three, Lot fifty-nine.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're now on to ordinances for introduction. I have ordinance twenty twenty-two, ten, ordinance of the city of Asbury Park establishing certain parking regulations and amending and supplementing section seven dash four one point five entitled Residential and Employee Permit Schedules, Fees, and Regulations of Chapter Seven, Traffic of the Code of the City of Asbury Park Regarding Residential Parking Permit Eligibility, with a public hearing date of July thirteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Whoa, let's, let's move it up before July thirteenth. Let's make it the next meeting. Right? No problem?
June twenty-second?
Yeah.
Yep.
That's fine.
Public hearing date of June twenty-second. Do you have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Okay, we're now on to second reading, public hearing of ordinances. I have twenty twenty-two dash seven, an ordinance amending and supplementing the code of the city of Asbury Park, New Jersey, in order to repeal the existing provisions of Chapter twenty-four entitled Flood Damage Prevention in Their Entirety and establish a new Chapter twenty-four thereof concerning flood damage prevention. Need an overview?
Yes, Jason Harzold from T and M is here, and he'll give a overview of what this ordinance does.
Good evening, everyone. Periodically FEMA and the National Flood Insurance Program issue revisions and additional evaluation of the flood hazard areas in the state of New Jersey. This particular ordinance, it, the the purpose of this ordinance, as required by FEMA and the NFIP, update our current ordinance to both align with the Uniform Construction Code and the National Flood Insurance Program. So it's something that was produced by FEMA and the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, issued as a draft model ordinance. The city had the option to adopt it as is or make certain revisions to make it more restrictive if the city chose to. We took certain liberties with making increasing a couple of items. One of the items was the fines for violations. That was, that was pretty much the major change. Otherwise, the ordinance was accepted in its original form. It also adopts by reference the new FEMA NFIP flood insurance rate maps, which are scheduled to be released on June fifteenth of this month. If anybody has any questions or needs any further information, I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Yes, thank you.
Have a motion to open the public hearing on twenty twenty-two, ten?
Move to open.
Second.
Public hearing now open. Any members of the public who wish to speak, please to the microphone?
Seeing none.
Motion to close public hearing?
Move to close.
Second.
Public hearing on twenty twenty-two dash seven closed. Motion to adopt twenty-two dash seven?
Move to adopt.
May I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're now on to twenty twenty-two, eight, bond ordinance providing for various transportation utility improvements by and in the city of Asbury Park and oh, in the County of Monmouth, state, state of New Jersey appropriating four million, four hundred thousand dollars therefore, including grants from the New Jersey Department of Transportation in the aggregate amount of nine hundred seventeen thousand, four hundred thirty-two dollars, and authorizing the issuance of four million, five hundred thousand dollars in bonds or notes to finance the cost thereof. Are we having an overview?
Since you're here, I'll let you give a quick overview of this one.
So this is bond ordinance for the
Monroe Comstock.
For the Monroe Comstock and Eighth Avenue project.
Right.
I hadn't gone through this yet, but
Four point five?
Four point five million dollar construction cost.
What's the grant?
With the, with the initial NJ DOT grant amount totaling nine hundred seventeen thousand and change. The project will encompass Monroe, Monroe Avenue from Memorial Drive to Prospect and Comstock Street from Prospect to Asbury Avenue. In addition, we're also going to be reconstructing Eighth Avenue from Deal Lake Drive all the way to Ocean Avenue. And it'll be full road reconstruction, curbs and sidewalks where necessary, and rehabilitation and reconstruction of the grass strips and including drainage and new sanitary sewer on all three roadways.
Motion to open the public hearing on twenty-two, eight?
Move to open.
Second.
Public hearing is now open.
Anybody like to be heard?
Yeah, I should say something, Brett.
I'll thank you again.
But what what is a reconstruction of Lake Avenue? They just did that a few years ago. What's that about?
He said from Deal Lake Drive, where it intersects Eighth to the, it's all of Eighth Avenue. It's not Lake, it's not Lake Avenue.
Oh, God. Didn't they just do from Memorial back?
Right, it it's Rita, it's the three streets. It's the three streets. It's not Lake Avenue. It's from, it's Eighth Avenue from Deal Lake Drive to the eastern end.
Okay.
Okay.
That means five oh four, right?
That means five oh four, Rita.
Okay. I'm waving patiently.
You did, and we we finally got there. And again, we grade the streets every year, and we do them in the order of the grading, and yours needed repairs, as same as the other two. And that's why they're being done. Again, this is like, in the past five years, we've replaced, and as the engineer said, we we just, a normal town just mills and paints where you can do ten times the amount with us, with our sewer lines being eight feet deep in the original terracotta. We have to dig up the entire streets and take out the sewer lines. We put in new curbs, new grass, new everything. So it's a total reconstruction job. And by doing that, we're saving a lot of money at the sewer plant with I and I infill and infiltration where groundwater is getting into the sewer lines, and we're really cleaning groundwater at the sewer plant instead of sewage. And we've reduced that dramatically, and I'm guessing in the past five years, we've done forty percent of the streets in Asbury Park, which is
That's fair.
is unbelievable. And we thank the state for the nine hundred thousand dollars, but it's a drop in the bucket to the overall cost. But we're going to continue doing this as long as we can. And so the next round of streets, we'll be applying for and looking for the grants also.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, that's on the side.
Yes.
Any other questions? Any other questions from the public? Motion to close?
Move it.
Second.
Second. Public hearing on twenty-two, eight now closed. Motion to adopt twenty-two, eight, twenty twenty-two, two eight?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Okay, on to twenty twenty-two, nine, ordinance of the city of Asbury Park establishing certain traffic regulations and amending and supplementing Chapter seven entitled Traffic of the Code of the City of Asbury Park Regarding the City Hall Municipal Parking Lot. Do we need an overview?
Yeah, this is an ordinance just modifying the hours and the availability of the parking spaces at City Hall. They will be restricted to three hours and only for City Hall business.
Motion to open the public hearing on twenty twenty-two, nine?
Move to open.
Second.
Public hearing is now open on twenty twenty-two, nine.
Anybody with any questions?
Move to close.
Second.
Public hear-
No meters.
Meters already in the parking lot.
It's already there. It's already, it's already a metered, a metered lot.
That's why we're doing this. So people, people from the post office, people from the bank, people from all the stores are parking their cars there all day long, and then people come to pay their taxes or for meetings, can't find a parking spot. So we're limited to three hours, so that can't happen.
Or city employees, I assume. If you give city employees a pass.
Yeah, city employees have purpose.
City employees would prevent it.
They have purpose.
I'm going to take your motion in a second to close if I can. I had a motion in a second to move to close. Yeah, thank you. Public hearing now closed on twenty twenty-two, nine. Motion to adopt twenty twenty-two, nine?
Move to adopt.
Okay, council member, thank you, council member Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Okay, I'm now on to adjournment. If anyone has anything else?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Guys all in favor to adjourn?
Yeah, we're all in favor.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.